It is six o'clock and we will call the first meeting of 2024 on January 9th for the City Council to order. And Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you for being here and hope your new year is off to a good start. We will have the invocation and the pledge. If you will stand, please. Lord, we come to you this evening with many, many thanks in our heart. We thank you for the wonderful, wonderful community that we are privileged to live in and to work in. We thank you for the many blessings that we personally, individually, and collectively have. I thank you for all the blessings that you give us. We're thankful for the opportunities and the challenges that lie ahead in this new year. And I ask, Lord, that as we start this new year, you help all of us to think critically, to work together, to set aside our own personal agendas, and remember that there is just one goal as we work in the situations that we're in, and that is what is best for the city of Kerrville. And just help us to keep that at the forefront. Help us to make that our goal as we work together. It is in your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Stuart, are you ready?
I am ready. Thank you, Mayor. And Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody is dealing with the cedar fever better than I am, at least. It's been tough. Been a tough week, but hopefully we'll be through that soon. All right, if I can get my stuff up on the screen. There we go. A few announcements tonight, and the first one is we get another opportunity to go fishing next week. Next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but January 17th, we'll have our second delivery of 1,200 rainbow trout, Guadalupe River there at Louise Hayes Park. We encourage everybody to come out and enjoy that. Everybody has the same question, what time does that start? And unfortunately, I can't tell you because those, the trucks that are carrying them come from San Marcos. We never know when they're going to get here. So you'll see a lot of excited fishermen along the banks waiting for them to get here, but it's a lot of fun when they do. So if you want to do that, be sure and get out there. You do need a valid freshwater fishing license. All right, Parks and Rec has two dances coming up, back to back. The Mother and Son Dance is, I like to say that, Sundance, sounds like, it sounds like a movie. The Mother and Son Dance is February 16th, 5:00 p.m. at the Happy State Bank. All tickets must be purchased in advance. Lot of fun every year. And then the very next, that's on a Friday, and then the very next night, Saturday, the Daddy Daughter Dance, 5:00 p.m. again, also at Happy State Bank. So if you want to, I'm sorry?
Expo Hall.
Expo Hall. Happy State Bank Expo Hall. Yes, not at Happy State Bank, sorry. Different part of town. So if you have a chance, if you want to take your son or your daughter out there, I encourage you to do that. It's a lot of fun every year. And after almost two years of getting a bond passed, we finally broke ground today on the public safety facility this afternoon at 2:00.
Yay!
That was a fun event. Of course, that's a $45 million facility. It's going to be built out there, 69,000 square feet, approved in a May '22 bond election. And when that's completed, it will house the Kerrville Police Department, Kerrville Fire Department admin offices, emergency operations center, municipal court, and then applicable information and technology systems. So great to get that done today. Now we need to start building.
Great way to start the new year off.
It was great.
All right, Council, anybody have anything that you would like to add?
KPA will be having an adoption event on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at 2102 Memorial Boulevard. That's our safe house property right next door to Shrima University, 11:30 to 2:30.
All right, anything for anybody else? All right. We have some presentations to make. If those who are on the Library Advisory Board and Recovery Coalition, if you will join me in front of the dais. All right, let me get my, okay. So I'm Joseph DePree, and you each have a different word. So let's do this. Okay. Actually, they say the same thing, so I'm doing, okay, good deal. City of Kerrville, resolution of commendation. Whereas Megan Dean has served as a member of the Library Advisory Board, the date of service beginning January 1, 2022, and whereas Joseph Dupree has served as a member of the Recovery Community Coalition, the date of service beginning December 31st, 2020. And whereas Megan and Joseph have both served faithfully and dutifully on their said board, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that we recognize both of you for your outstanding service as a member of the Library Advisory Board and Serena's Chair, and as a member of the Recovery Community Coalition. And I don't believe you had a title, did you? You were a member.
I had a couple.
Did you have a member? Okay. But that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for your contributions to the city and the community. And these are signed by all of Council. So we appreciate it. There's Joseph. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Sometimes it's been a little rough going in some of these, on some of these committees, but we appreciate what you have done and your service. Would you like to say something?
No, just appreciate Council's recommendation, putting me on the board, hand serving, and I appreciated the opportunity.
Thank you for serving.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been my pleasure. It's been my pleasure.
All right, very good. Well, come back when you, when you can. We'd love to have you back again. All right. I think before you do that, we need a picture, and then I want you to shake the Council's hand.
Okay.
There we go. One, two, and three. Let's do one more. Thank you.
All right, please, shake some hands.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, we have another presentation. And Chief, I believe you are the one who's going to do this. And if Officer David Cordova is, is he in? There he is, coming in.
Almost here.
Almost here. All right.
Thank you. That's why I'm coming up here to lead everyone. Well, while we're waiting on Officer Cordova, I can give you a little bit of history about the award we're going to present him. From a policy perspective of the Kerrville Police Department, to qualify for a life-saving bar, which is what we'll be presenting to Officer Cordova tonight, you have to have performed an act that prolongs a person's life for at least six hours. And as you'll hear through this story, it was much more than that. And we, as an organization, take these awards very seriously. We do a thorough review of the incidents that occur, assign a review board to take a look at the incident, go over all the details, and look at our policy and ensure every box is checked and that the person has, has earned the award. So once we get to this point where we're presenting an award to someone, due diligence has been done in the background to ensure that the person qualifies for the award and, and has earned it. And in this instant, you'll, you will soon hear that Officer Cordova definitely earned his life-saving bar at this incident.
How many people are on your review board?
So a review board, as it's assigned, we have up to five people that can sit on that review board and review the incident. They review body camera, they review written reports, they talk with, in this case, they talked with both EMS as well as hospital personnel, both here and in, in San Antonio, where the person eventually ended up.
Okay.
And we believe, I'm sorry. All right, Officer Cordova, come up and join me. This is your spot, right here. I won't make you say anything. So Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to, to present this award to Officer Cordova. This is our, our life-saving bar. On Wednesday, November 8th, at about 11 o'clock, Officer Cordova was on duty when he responded to a call for service regarding an unresponsive male. The person who was on the phone with dispatch was attempting to perform CPR because the person had no pulse and was unresponsive. Officer Cordova responded rapidly and was on scene rather quickly, took over CPR from the individual there. He performed CPR for four and a half minutes. If, if you've ever had, it's my own pleasure, but the, the opportunity to perform CPR, when, when you're going for four and a half minutes, that's a very long time. You're looking for a break. So he, he continued on until EMS arrived. Once EMS arrived and began performing life-saving measures, they, they were able to get a faint pulse and transported the individual to Peterson. And then he was eventually transported to a hospital in San Antonio. Officer Cordova's supervisor, Sergeant Ledesma, recognized his actions and recommended him to the Meritorious Review Board to look at this incident. And that board reviewed the incident and proclaimed that Officer Cordova had met all the requirements to receive our life-saving bar. And based on the board's recommendation and the actions of Officer Cordova, I'm very proud tonight to present you with your life-saving bar from Kerrville Police Department.
Thank you.
Chief, I think there's, is there a family that should be introduced here?
Oh, there sure is. Thank you guys for coming and attending. This is my wife, 14 years now, Natalie Cordova, my son, 13 years old, Diego, and my daughter, Braylon Cordova. They're all awesome, and they're what keeps me going every day.
Thank you, guys, for supporting your day. And thank you, everybody else, for being here. There are a couple other names that I need to mention, who we also had commendation certificates for. Melinda Stewart for the Library Advisory Board, Thomas Hurt for the Recovery Coalition, also Joseph Pizor for the Recovery Coalition, and Cynthia Tate for the Recovery Coalition. So our thanks to all of those people for serving on those committees and giving Kerrville their best. We appreciate it. All right, I believe we have a visitor and citizens forum next. Shelley?
Yes, ma'am, we have one signed up.
All right.
Anthony Farmer.
Haven't seen you for a while.
Hello, Mayor, how are you? I say my name and address, right?
Please.
So Anthony Farmer, 1871 Junction Highway, Kerrville. So ladies and gentlemen and esteemed members of the Kerrville City Council, citizens and visitors, good evening. I stand before you tonight with both gratitude and excitement as we introduce a new initiative in this year of 2024 that is destined and determined to make a positive impact on our community. Before I delve into the heart of our message, I want to take a moment to express our heartfelt appreciation to the Kerrville City Council and the entire community for the unwavering dedication and tireless efforts you invest in making Kerrville a better place to live. Your commitment to fostering a thriving and supportive community has not gone unnoticed, and we are truly grateful for your service. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of introducing Prodigal Road Ministries, a Christian nonprofit discipleship ministry that is committed to being a beacon of hope and healing for men who have faced addiction, trauma, abuse, neglect. Our mission is rooted in the belief that everyone deserves a second chance, and through faith-based principles and genuine relationships, we aim to provide the necessary and supportive resources for individuals on their journey to recovery and redemption. We recognize that addiction and its associated challenges affect not only the individuals involved, but are also, they also affect the broader community. That is why we are here today, not only to introduce Prodigal Road Ministries, but to extend an open invitation to the citizens of Kerrville to join hands with us in this noble endeavor. Our ministry is not just about rehabilitation, it is about relationship and transformation. Prodigal Road Ministries currently operates with two organizational arms that both fall under the Prodigal Road Ministries umbrella. The first arm is called Prodigal Journey, which is our outreach arm that houses our men's discipleship and life skills classes, which are free and open to the community. The second arm is called Prodigal Road Houses, which are an initiative to develop discipleship homes aimed at building up strong men grounded in faith that can add value to the Kerrville community. We believe firmly that by addressing the root causes of addiction and providing a nurturing environment, we can help these men rebuild their lives and become valuable contributors to our community. To further underline our commitment, I'm thrilled to announce that we are, we have established and opened our very first Prodigal Road House. It is called the Genesis House, and it's located at 1871 Junction Highway, just between Antler Auto and Kerrville Veterinary Clinic. This facility will serve as a haven for those seeking recovery and healing with a faith-based approach. It is our hope that with the support of the community and the guidance of our faith-based programs, the Genesis House will be a place where lives are restored and individuals find purpose and meaning once again. As we embark on this journey, we want to ensure the City Council and the community that Prodigal Road Ministries is not just an independent entity, it is a collaborative effort. We are here to complement and contribute to the ongoing initiatives that make Kerrville a safe, loving, compassionate, and vibrant place to call home. In conclusion, I want to extend our gratitude once again to the city and to the City Council and the community for your continued dedication to Kerrville. And we invite each of you to consider Prodigal Road Ministries as a resource and a partner in the shared mission of making our community a better place for all. Our Board of Directors, our staff, our participants, all stand ready and willing to support the community in any way we can. We ask that you let us work hand in hand in bringing about positive change and transformation to the lives of those who need it most. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And Anthony, we might see you, thank you for the applause, we might see you on the Recovery Coalition. So something to do.
I have business, Congressman.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we will move next to the consent agenda. And we're going to do a little bit different method of our consent agenda now. So this is new for all of us. I think the, what will, what, what we are attempting to do is if we have a second reading for an ordinance, we are going to, and if there were no, there was no opposition to that ordinance when it was voted in, that we will be putting these on a consent agenda. So it just streamlines things, and someone can still, if necessary, pull it off and, and talk about it. That, it doesn't prohibit that. But because it was approved unanimously the first time, then we are, we would expect that it would be unanimous the second time. And so we will put it on the consent agenda, but we also will have it read in full. So it's not, we won't, we won't do it without reading it. And I think I've talked, visited with Shelley, and I think what we will have her do, just so that I think things will be a little smoother, we will have her read each of the items on the consent agenda, and probably any ordinance that, what is a second reading will be first. But we'll just have her read through each of those, so there's no confusion. And all of them will be read. So Council, any questions on that? Are you guys comfortable with that? Okay, very good.
Do you want us to give us the items we want to pull right now, or do you want to wait?
Um.
Because I'm going to pull 4A.
Okay, you are going to pull 4A.
Yes.
Let's read all of them, and then if someone wants them pulled, okay?
Yes, ma'am, 4A, ordinance number 2023-34, second reading. An ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2024 FY 2024 budget to allocate funds to be used for expenses related to the city's preparation for, in response to the total solar eclipse event, which will take place April of 2024. 4B, resolution number 01, 2024, a resolution ordering that a general election be held on May 4th, 2024, for the election of mayor, and two council members for Place 3 and 4, providing details relating to the holding of such election, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Kerr County Elections Officer for the holding of the election, and providing other matters related to the subject. Purchase 4C, purchase of dump truck for city's Public Works Department, the amount not to exceed $150,000. 4D, City Council Workshop Minutes, December 12th, 2023. 4E, City Council Meeting Minutes, December 12th, 2023.
All right.
There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Roman, you want to pull 4A, you said?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion for, for B, for C, for D, and for E?
So moved.
A second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. It is unanimous. Roman, 4A.
Okay. I'm pulling this because I respectfully object to the change of procedures that is being taken. Our current practice is to have the readings done of ordinances at two separate regular meetings on separate parts of the agenda. Now, I understand that the, probably the intent is, or the desire is to have a more efficient process to streamline what would be routine matters. But what I want to make note is that it's important to note that the consent agenda, per Rule 3.2, is that the consent agenda is intended for quote "routine items" that is appropriate to be considered as a group without separate discussion. This item is an ordinance, and it amends our agenda. It's not a routine item. It isn't something we do every meeting. And I don't think second readings of any ordinance should be routine because they're not something we do every meeting. That's why they're ordinances. Things like the minutes that we do every meeting, those are routine, and are why we put them on our consent agenda. So I want to make sure that that's done. Also, this was done without having any discussion with the council. We were provided information about this beforehand. So what I would propose is that before implementing this type of procedural change to this, that we engage in a more comprehensive discussion amongst the council. At our next regular meeting, or if you want to do a workshop, so we can talk about the rules. But in order to do this, you also need to change the rules to put ordinances on the consent agenda, because right now, that's not something that the rules would provide. So that would be my proposal. If it's something we want to accomplish, I want to make sure we do it in the proper way. Besides that, if council does not want to do that, then for anything that's not a routine item that's going to be placed on here, I may intend to remove those from the consent agenda from now on, to be compliant with our rules.
Are you making that a motion?
To have a workshop?
Well, whatever, what, what would you like in your motion?
I was going to propose a future agenda item, unless you'd like me to do it now that we can discuss the procedural changes that y'all want to make.
Well, we won't do procedural changes now, but do you want to, we need a motion from you to, something to do with this. So what, what are you, what are you telling us?
So, okay, so I'm telling you that I object to having it on the consent agenda, which is why I removed it. It needs to be considered separately. It's not a routine item. So that's why I removed it. And so I'm telling you what I, what my proposal is to do, which I will recommend under items for future agendas, which I think is the appropriate time to make that proposal. Besides that, if you want an action specifically on this, I will move to approve this, but it needs to be done off of the consent agenda, if that makes sense.
Okay, so your, your motion is?
I will move to approve or adopt ordinance number 2023-24.
Second, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Right, and that's, hold on.
Okay, all right. We, it is unanimous.
And that's the way we need to be doing it.
All right, we, are you, are you good, Shelley?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good, thank you. All right, we are ready for 5A. Shelley?
Review report from the Charter Review Commission regarding recommendations of amendments to city charter. And we do have 10 citizen speakers signed up.
Mr. Hayes.
Let me see. My PowerPoint gets up. There it goes. Yeah, so at your most recent meeting, you received a report from the Charter Review Commission. And so now I'm here tonight to kind of set the stage. This will be a little bit more of a drill down into the amendments for, for you all and the audience, and then followed up by a passage of an ordinance. First reading next time, a second reading in the first meeting in February, where you all will set the, set the election, and then set the amendments that you all want to, the voters to consider. Just a history of the review, you all appointed the Charter Review Commission back in August. That's pursuant to our current charter. The CRC held seven meetings, including a public hearing. They submitted the report again to you all at the December 12th meeting. The report and the revised charter have been posted on our website since that time. I, I think it also is important to note that Greg Richards, who was the chair of the Charter Review Commission, presented you with a statement, basically, at the, at presentation at the last meeting. His, his, his speech, speechette, if you will, is online, and I think it's, I think it's a really well-done document. I think it's worth rereading if you haven't read it before. Again, it's on, online. And I think it goes into kind of their general purpose, where they, where they set out to review the charter, which was to identify and prioritize changes that they felt were important to then submit to the voters. So in other words, they, they weren't, you know, necessarily gung ho for any of these necessarily as, as a body, but they want, they felt like they were important issues that the voters should consider at, at the May election. Their overarching kind of theme and goal was to simplify where they could, clarify where they could, and 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 I think they've done a really good job doing that. If you look at their going back to the report, which again is online, it has a summary of what each amendment does. It then has a redlined version of that section of the charter that they're proposing to be changed. And then they they put in their rationale, which again, I think they've over seven meetings really dealt delved into and have come up with some good rationale for for their amendments, their proposed amendments. So how does the election work? Voters, of course, must consider and approve the charter amendments. That's straight out of state law. The election will be held as part of the May 4th general election. The ordinance, which I've referred to earlier, is authorize the election and to set out the amendments. The and you'll see this next time. I haven't finished with the ordinance yet, but you'll see this. It'll be in the packet. And so that'll be available for your review and the public's review. It'll go it is basically two sections, two main sections. One is the measures, and that's all the amendments. And that'll be a redlined amendment of each section that's proposed for amendment and then the propositions. Those will be the actual ballot questions. And again, I think when you all get the ordinance, it'll be clearer. And I'll show you kind of a snapshot of that on a subsequent slide. About three weeks before the election, we do a newspaper notice, and that's pursuant to state law. That'll have the amendments and the fiscal impact where applicable to each amendment. So some of the amendments won't have any no no fiscal impact. There are a few that I believe will have a fiscal impact. And the ballot, again, I said this, ballot will use the proposition questions. And this is what I mean by the measures. So this is measure A, and it basically will set out a section like it's done here and show very clearly what has been stricken and what is proposed, what wording is proposed to be added by the blue underline. And then measure A will go into proposition A, which will be the actual ballot language. And so from the ordinance, this will be exactly the language that goes on the ballot. So in other words, you get into the the ballot box and with your paper or electronically, and you're not going to see the redlined version of the ordinance. That's just not efficient nor what we're required to do under state law. So you'll have to do homework. You should do your homework before you go to the ballot box so that you're aware of what proposition A, how that impacts the charter. And what I intend to do now is to go through specifically very quickly, as quick as I can, each of the propositions. So proposition A, again, this will stem from a measure A. Proposition A is intended to clarify the meaning and intent of various charter sections, eliminate inconsistencies. And so with this, in this measure A, there are 10 different sections that are going to be that are proposed for amendment. And out of those 10 different section, it all kind of morphs into one proposition. And again, it'll be clearer when you all see the ordinance, which will come before you all next time. But this proposition addresses grammar, disannexation authority, which we have that in our charter now. It seeks to clarify what that means. And then there's a section in the charter that talks about your rules and it has the uses the phrase disorderly conduct. And the Charter Review Commission said, hey, what does disorderly conduct mean? And so they came up with the definition, which they've added to that section. Proposition B, similar to proposition A in that it seeks to revise and delete redundancies or with or where there's inconsistencies with state law. And in five years since the last charter review, there's been two legislative sessions. And you all, I think, know that each legislative session now where we deal with changes to state law and how that impacts our authority and our charter provisions. And so the Charter Review Commission thought it important to obviously go through the charter and get rid of these redundancies or where it's inconsistent with state law. So for instance, there's garnishment of city property. That's in our charter. Well, we already have the authority in state law, so it really doesn't need to be in our charter. And when it's in your charter and state law changes, then you're then you potentially have this conflict. So they they're they're recommending that we strike that section. We strike we don't strike the section on annexation, but that's been changed. We are significantly limited in property that we can annex. And so our section needs to be changed to reflect that. Condemnation imminent domain, we don't use that very much at all a couple times since I've been here. But we don't need that in the charter. It's in state law and it is tweaked occasionally by the state legislature. Utility franchises, again, in our charter, we don't need that. It's covered in state law. There's a there's a provision in our charter that talks about our records will be made available to the public. Well, that's the Public Information Act already requires us to do that. Public Information Act, I was just going through it today. There are several significant changes that were recently adopted by the legislature. And bonds, there's a section in our charter that requires you all to go through some analysis as to which employees should be bonded. As far as our finance department knows, they haven't done that in years. They haven't recommended that process to you all. There's probably since the time that was first put into our charter, financial accounting and checks and balances have changed, and so they don't believe that that section is necessary. Proposition C, this is an interesting one. We used to have this in our charter, and I can't remember why the voters removed it, but I believe it's my recommendation that we adopt it again or the voters adopt it again. It essentially requires a 90-day notice to the city of any of any injuries that someone might incur. And state law already requires 180-day notice, but it allows state law, there's no mention of whether cities can can reduce that. And so many and so when there's no state law that says you can't, many cities do. And many cities do reduce this time period. And I just got a call within the last week or two from someone who from an attorney who was who asked me about the notice provision in our in our charter. And I told him we didn't have one. And anyway, he was providing notice of a potential injury caused by the city. So I think this is this is good to have. It puts everyone on notice. And in many cases, the city can know what 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 occurred and may in fact remedy it without it going much, much beyond that. Proposition D, that's that's the provision that will increase the term of office from two to three years for each council member, including the mayor. And you all may know this, but in our in our charter now, council members are defined as including everyone but everyone, including the mayor. And so I that's just a reminder of that. The CRC really, probably over at least two meetings, maybe more, really chewed on this issue. And I really and talked to former council members, I think talked to some of you all about this issue. And the belief is, and you can read in the rationale, I think they've done a great job. The belief is that you really, as a council member, I've never been a council member, I don't know. But as a council member, you really are being fed through a fire hose, watered through a fire hose for the first year. And the next thing you know, you know, you're being asked, are you going to run again or not? This just gives people a longer time period for that first term for their term of office to really get their feet on the ground and to really figure out kind of the rhythms of office and how how the process works, the budget process works, and how to get things done. And so they they felt strongly that the voters should consider that. We did surveys of other cities that have done this. And like I said, they really spent a lot of time thinking about this issue. Now, if the voters vote to go to a three-year term, there are a number of state law implications. One, if a vacancy occurs, then if the if the vacancy is for a term that exceeds one year remaining on the term, then an election would be required. That's different than now. If a vacancy occurs now, you all appoint the person. We would instead of a plurality election, we would go to a majority election. And so the potential is when you have more than two candidates, then you could have a runoff. And that's just something that, you know, needs to be, we need to be aware of as part of this implication. And then there's this third aspect, which is resign to run. And that's kind of an interesting state constitutional provision. But anytime you get over a two-year term, the resign to run provision applies. And what that is, is if any one of you with more than, I think it's a, I believe it's a year and 30 days on their term, if you all said, I'm going to run in a public manner, I'm going to run for county commissioner, you will have automatically resigned your office as a city council member. And it it comes up periodically because someone will mention something, it may be a chamber event, and maybe it's into a microphone or maybe it's just, you know, loudly to a bunch of people, and it it can become an issue. But just something to be aware of if we went to a three-year term. Proposition E is will clarify when a council member will vacate or forfeit his or her office. We have that provision in there where it talks about a forfeiture of office, but we really didn't have anything that set out what 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 those things are. And so the CRC really recommended that you all consider or the voters consider adding that to into the charter. Proposition F, change amount paid to council members and the mayor and changing payment to be monthly rather than per meeting. Many people don't know this. I mean, I was asked this weekend about not in relation to the charter amendments, but just how much do council members get paid? And I said, well, the grand sum of $25 per meeting. And it hasn't been too long ago where we we separated that into workshops versus regular meetings. And so you all essentially get, we believe now, roughly 80, excuse me, $100 a month on an average month. The CRC believes that based upon, and that that's been set since at least 1983. And so we had a there was a financial guy on the CRC, and he believes going with the cost of living from 1983 to now, that this will get you 17% up to the grand, you know, at least part of the way to what is a fair cost of living increase. But the recommendation would be for $250 per month for council members and $500 per month for the mayor. They spent a lot of time on this issue as well. They we did some survey work of other cities for them. They talked to council members. I know they talked to the to the mayor about how many meetings she's invited to go to, required to go to. And they believe this is a fair number that they're recommending for the that the voters consider. Obviously, then it would also alleviate staff's time spent counting up how many meetings you all attend and and the payment and that that sort of thing. Proposition G is fairly simple. It changes are made for gender neutrality. Proposition H, this is a change, and I'll do H and I together. This is a change that the CRC thought was important. We have a little bit of this in our in these sections now. In other words, if after a council is after the May election every year, council would be required to have a four-fifths vote to terminate either the city manager or the city attorney within 60 days of that election. So part this is partly in there, and this is, I think, what gave them the idea. But it would require a four-fifths appointment and a four-fifths termination vote to make those changes. And again, I think if you look at the rationale, I think that, you know, it's it's clear on what they were thinking there. And the last one is proposition J. That will increase the time for the city manager to submit his annual budget to you all. And I think you know now, it's July 31st of each year. Now, we go to the second Monday of each year. And based upon input from the finance department, in many years, certainly recently, they are awaiting they they wait for KCAD to give them the the property tax data, which obviously is a big component of of our budgeting. They wait for that, and sometimes they are working basically, you know, close to 24 hours a day for two or three days to get that all together so that the city manager can then add that data into the budget and get it to you all and online by the 31st. And so they believe this will give them enough time to get KCAD's information, which KCAD has required to do, and it's that's that's dealt in state law. But based on KCAD's timing and then the proposed timing, it'll give the finance department enough time to get the proposed budget in a in a better way with with not so much anxiety and stress and perhaps with perhaps some mistakes involved or, you know, having to come back with with some updated data. So that's really all I have. Again, a reminder, so based upon where you are tonight, come back to you on the 23rd with the first reading of an ordinance that will set out, again, the measures and the propositions. I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you'll just give me directions tonight, that's what I'm seeking.
All right, counsel. Any anything you might want to add? Questions for Mr. Hayes before we open it for public comment?
No, I thank you for that, all that information. I think it was a good summary, too, for the public to understand the process that underwent for this and then also what's going to happen. And this isn't something that the council just threw out there, all these proposed amendments. It's something that a commission took deliberate work and and put thought into to propose to council. I do have comments on multiple of the amendments and would suggest probably either removing some before they go into the ordinance or not. So Mayor, since you control discussion, I'll let you determine whether you feel like you want to do that now, but I think we could also hear from the public first before we go any further into discussion, if you'd like.
Anyone else? Any comments? Anything you would like to do? I would like to listen to the public.
Sounds great.
And so Shelley? And also, I would like to add, please keep your remarks to three minutes, if you will, tonight. Thank you.
Tim Summerlin.
Thank you. Tim Summerlin, 105 Turnberry Circle here in Kerrville. Just briefly, I have served on the Charter Review Commission. I want to express my sense of the honor of the ability to do that. And I hope that what we produced will be useful to you. Certainly, in addition to being a good opportunity to do something productive for the city, it was a great learning opportunity. I would point out the tremendous help we had from the staff, the city attorney, the finance office, everybody, very, very helpful. And when we needed something, needed information, the people who were on that commission were all people who were committed. There was good discourse. There was give and take. It was not unanimity, and we came around and listened. And it was just a great experience to learn the diversity of the ways small cities in this state do things and to recognize that there are not any one right way and that what you do is proceed as wisely as you can. Now, the final thing that I would mention about that experience is it was a great reminder of how important it is to get away from something that is perfectly human, that is, to think in our own kind of narrow and partisan way. And to realize that when you're part of a community, you don't start with, here's the way it ought to be because I want it to be this way. It's a great way of opening up and appreciating other kinds of views. And so I simply want to say that whatever you all and your deliberations may come up with, out of our recommendations to you, whatever the city may decide in voting on those recommendations, that it was a great opportunity and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Summerlin.
Jaclyn Hall?
Good evening, counsel. It's Jaclyn Hall, 1800 Junction Highway. So I'll kind of go over three of those propositions that I have an issue with. So first of all, on the pay increase, I know it's a kind of a slight pay increase, and y'all are kind of changing how, how it operates in terms of not per meeting, but rather monthly. But it is, it is a little bit of a pay bump. And so while taxpayers are experiencing a lot of inflation on top of the $45 million bond that we passed last year, year before for the public safety complex, that did hit us with a pretty big property tax increase. Then we had the $20 million bond that y'all passed, I think, last meeting or meeting before. That's going to increase our taxes. And then there was the county bond that was passed for the animal shelter. That increased our taxes already. So while on the subject of the county, they also increased pay for all county employees recently, which results in higher taxes. So those of us who live in the city are getting a double whammy. We're getting increases from the city through property taxes and from the county. I understand that y'all's pay hasn't been increased since the 80s, per what Mr. Hayes was saying. So why not, maybe do you like a gradual increase instead of going, you know, right up to whatever cost of living is? Because citizens are definitely not able to keep up with cost of living with the way Bidenomics are and inflation. It's, it's unrealistic. I'm also opposed to the extended city council terms. Members of the Texas House and even members of U.S. Congress each have two-year terms. So it's pretty traditional. It's not out of, out of the ordinary. I believe that our founders did this intentionally to keep the House of Representatives most responsive to the people as compared to the Senate that has the six-year terms. We, the people, hope to see that the three-year terms are not, are not, we'd rather have the two-year terms because I think it's less responsive of our elected officials to move to three-year terms. I also oppose requiring a supermajority to remove the city manager and the city attorney. In recent history, council has not removed a city manager or attorney with the current rules, and so I don't see really a need for changing this. It's, it's kind of finding a problem where there isn't one. So changing to a supermajority will further cement the bureaucracy, and that's a problem that we're seeing all across the country, whether it's federal, state, or local levels of government. Bureaucrats are, are pretty well in charge, and that's bad for we, the people. I believe that government should be as responsive as possible to the people, meaning that elected officials should have more authority than bureaucrats do. Our government at every level is becoming way too dependent on bureaucrats who are not elected and not accountable. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Fitch?
Good evening, counsel. First question, just came to me when you were talking, Mr. Hayes. How many propositions will be on the ballot in May? Is it 10?
10.
Jay? That's a lot of propositions for people to come in. I, I work elections, I'm sure you know that, and most of the folks seem to come in without having read those things. Okay, to what I came for. It is about the compensation, and I'm not yes or no yet at this point in time, but I am confused. I'll be less confused if I put my glasses on. It says, "To offset out-of-pocket expenses," that's the 250 or 500, "is to offset out-of-pocket expenses." So in other words, if you've taken something out of your pocket, you're going to get something back, and it's coming out of that 250 or 500. But down at the bottom of the page, it says, "In an effort to compensate council members for their time." Their time is not something that's coming out of their pocket, and so I'm just wondering. I'm confused, and it would be nice if you all could maybe make that a little more clear so we'd know. Is that 250 to pay back expenses, or is that 250 just to put in your pocket? Which, okay. And then the last thing that I had to say was, oh yeah, council members may be reimbursed for other reasonable. So you're getting the 250, 500, and you have the option of getting other, reimbursed for other reasonable things. So what is it? Do you get the 250, or do you get the 250 plus whatever else you spend? So just clarification might help this pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Andrew?
Some thoughts on the city council, city charter changes. I come as an individual with experience on at least two prior city charter commissions, including one here, serving on two city councils and a school board, and I understand and appreciate the diverse ideas and the complexities before the charter committee. It is a daunting task, and it's often difficult to achieve some kind of consensus. Each of us citizens could noodle or wordsmith the final wording forever, but I think our task really is to give you what we endorse or don't endorse at the top level. I come to support the entire lot of offered changes. I want to mention two changes which I strongly endorse. Increased compensation for the council and the mayor. This is not a salary. It offsets a portion of the costs that those who serve our community. Having served, I can tell you, 250 isn't going to cover everything that happens. It happens some, a lot more. Council members and mayors are expected to be seen at many places, attend many meetings, most of which you're not paid for, and speak at conferences, and all of this is free to us and a cost to those serving. I do support the 250 and the 500 for the council and the mayor. As I said before to the panel, we elect you for your thoughts, your insight, your listening, and then your decisions. We do not ask for your job, your financial contributions, nor your health, nor your family, but this address at least one of those. The other one addresses the council, is the commission, council and mayor three-year terms. Three years seems to be an excellent balance between effectiveness and, and accountability at the ballot box. Regardless of prior experience, it takes nine to 12 months to figure out where things are, the complexity of the city finances, city codes, approvals, the role of the council, and a weak mayor, strong city manager type organization. Then for the next six to nine months, a newly-elected council person is more effective, and then comes the decision to stand for reelection. And if so, then the campaigning absorbs much energy and time. By going to three years, each council member's effectiveness should be greatly enhanced. By the way, if you want to appoint me on a year-to-year basis to decide who has to stand for election each year, I'll take that, and I'll change my support. Thanks to the charter commission, you have attacked some long-term elephants in the room, had the courage to offer other significant changes, and now I encourage the council to bring the entire package before the voters for their approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Clarkson?
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to support the Charter Review Committee's recommendations that you are considering tonight. Every five years, as we all know now in this room, council has the opportunity to engage citizens in a very meaningful way by asking a group of citizens to serve on the Charter Review Committee. What a great opportunity for community members to become actively involved, learning about, and taking a deep dive into how our city operates. While some recommendations we could consider minor in some ways, others will have longer-lasting implications. And I want to talk about two recommendations that I believe have the potential for a long-lasting and positive impact on the city of Kerrville. First, I'll address council terms. As a former council member, I can honestly say that my first year on council, just like Mr. Hayes said, I was drinking out of a fire, out of a fire. It was learning policies, procedures, city departments and their functions, and gosh, Brenda, acronyms. How long does it take to learn all of the, all of those acronyms? About halfway through my second year, I felt like I was starting to hit my stride, and then, as we all know, that's about the time, that it's time to decide if you're going to run again. As you all know as well, having run for contested races, it is a drain on your energy, your time, your resources, and it takes away from what you can accomplish as a member of council. So I think allowing for a three-year term allows council members to gain momentum, to learn and to grow into their roles. I firmly believe that by simply adding one year to each term, you will find more individuals who would consider serving. And another benefit, one that I had never considered, is the ability, the stability that comes from rotating this cycle in a way that you never have a year where you have three potential seats to turn over on council. As we all know, how long it takes if you bring in three new members, learning and starting from the ground up at the same time, which has happened in recent times. It, you know, it takes a while to come up to speed, and so you now don't have the potential to have that big swing within one year. The second issue is pay. I can't tell you how many citizens I've spoken to about running for office who have said, "Why would I do that? I'm going to make people mad. I'm going to spend a lot of time at meetings, and you're not going to pay me to do that." No, thank you. I've, you know, I've heard those arguments as well, but the truth is, becoming a council member is critically important, and we all know that we want and ask and hope that more people in the public will engage in the process. And I think reimbursing them for their time and their emotional energy would be a benefit.
Thank you. Kim, I don't think you gave us your name and address.
It was written at the top here.
That's all right. Just for the record.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Kim Clarkson, 1228 Lewis Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Dool Ferguson?
Hi, counsel, Barbara Dool Ferguson. I live on Dry Hollow Drive here in Kerrville. I have a couple of comments. I'm, I'm going to start with the, the terms, and I'm kind of extending the terms to three years, and I'm torn on this one. I can see lots of different sides to it, one of them being, it's always difficult to get people to run. A three-year commitment is going to make them think even harder. I think you can all appreciate that. Then, and that's the negative. The positive, I, I really can see that it could help to have some additional time. But I guess I'm just going to say, you know, give it lots of thought, consider all the aspects of it, because we really do need people to run. We haven't had, the general, the general results of this is that people do run for a second term. So generally, you do have that wind-up time, but then you do have a second term, which, matter of fact, I think, you know, we've got several here. Everybody but Jav, you know, has, has run more than once. And so in that instance, if you go with a three-year term, then we're actually talking about having people on the council for six years. And then we need to start talking about accountability of the voters, and I think that that is an important consideration. So I'm not going to make, now I'm going to say I'd like to see it one way or the other. I'm going to say I'm thinking with you and just give it a lot of thought. Then the one thing I do have a real problem with is changing to a four-fifths vote for the two positions that the city council does have control over. I see this as a balance of powers issue. In our city, you are, you are the representatives of the people who are to watch over and to represent the people and make sure their interests are being served. If you see that our city might be better served with a different city manager, a different city attorney, that you are the people's only representative, and if you remove that down to, make it a four-fifths vote, you're making it very difficult to represent the people. And so I'd like you to think really hard about that one. And furthermore, we have not had a problem, as Jaclyn mentioned, that we haven't had no problem. I think the city attorney's been on staff over 20 years, and Dalton, I want you to know that we haven't run anybody off, you know? So this is not a problem that we've had. I, I think that you're abdicating an important part of your job if you change that to a four-fifths vote. Okay? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
John Harrison?
John Harrison, 2911 Dry Hollow. Barb's neighbor. Hi, Barb. I was here five years ago. I don't think any of you were up there, but we wrote the perfect charter five years ago, Mike. I don't know why we're having to redo it tonight, so. But I really didn't come up here to talk about any individual part of the proposal because you put a perfect process in place. The process is the Charter Review Commission held a public hearing, and I got to come up here and ask all my questions and debate and, and with all of the commission members, and, and I talked to many of them afterwards and at different times, and I've talked to several of you about all of the bits and pieces, because we wrote the perfect charter five years ago. But I came to find out we didn't. And this group has wrote, what I can tell, what I can see, is the perfect charter, or maybe close to it. So without getting into any of the details, because I can argue lots, bits and pieces of all the details, I wholeheartedly support what this commission has put together. They had a diverse group of people, a great background, as Tim mentioned, and now it's up to you, but from what I can see, you ought to just write off and support what they proposed and, and send it to the voters and let us decide in May. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Irving Hart?
Good evening. My name's Bud Hart. Irving Hart's my real name. 135 Plaza Drive. I just recently moved back to Kerrville from Klammer Falls, Oregon, where I lived for 49 years and served 24 years on the city council there. And one of the things I, I don't think people understand, and I'd like to really congratulate all of you and endorse all of you for what is really, truly, a volunteer job. It's not a paid position. You're not lining your pockets with the amount you get. In Klammer Falls, I was paid $50 a month as a city councilman, and that worked out, I think, to about 10 cents an hour. So I would, I would endorse, and I, I did read the rest of the charter amendments, too. I would, I would endorse the charter amendments, and all of them, of just, if I, if you'll allow me a personal anecdote on the majority plurality issue, which I had forgotten about. When I was first elected, they hadn't counted all the votes, but the newspaper said that I, my opponent was elected by three votes. And we then had a recount, mandatory recount. I didn't ask for a recount. Mandatory recount, and I won by five votes. So I, I think that the, the charter proposal that you have, a recount if it's only a plurality, is a really good idea. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all your service to the community.
Mr. Hart, I'm, I'm sorry, it's kind of out of, how many years did you say you did?
I spent 24 years on the city council.
Were you mad at yourself?
Sir, yes, I, I was. I, I, I could, once I got on, I couldn't get off. And, and in Klammer Falls, we had four-year terms, so I had six four-year terms.
Wow.
Thank you.
That's incredible.
Ian Daughery, Daugh, Daugherty?
Daugherty, ma'am. Thank you. My name is Ian Daugherty, 708 Smoky Mountain Drive here in Kerrville. The two things I wanted to be able to address tonight from the CRC was, one, being able to get a, a cost of living raise. Well, first off, I don't think you're living on this stuff anyway. You know, that's pretty much a given. Second, just as had been mentioned earlier, it's a voluntary position. This isn't a job. This is something you should be honored to do to represent the people of Kerrville. Now, honestly, I say, you know what? What you get is what you get. You may not like it, but it's not a job. It's a volunteer position. And the other thing is that with the term limits, what is the problem with having two years? I've heard it mentioned that you, takes what, nine months to be able to get this and that and the other and learn what you're doing, and all this other stuff, and, well, okay. And, well, okay, great. Make the rest of your term count and do just exactly what you all have been doing in the first place. Rerun. If you're good enough, you shouldn't be afraid of a two-year term and decide that you need to have a three-year term. These things don't need to be changed. They were put in place for a reason. This town is facing a lot of problems. We're facing a lot of financial problems in this town. And the truth is that unfortunately, some people don't really care. They don't care. "Okay, well, just go ahead and throw a little bit more into it." Well, you know what? There's a lot of people that do care. You guys care about the people that are out there on the streets in the freezing cold right now? You know? Why are you going to go ahead and give y'all self a raise when you could be actually doing something about that? These are very simple issues, very simple questions. Do the right thing. Represent Kerrville, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Council, Brenda, anything you would like to say right now?
Well, for the record, Mayor, I would just like to add that I've had a homeless man living with me and my family for over a year now, so I just thought you should know that.
Joe?
Some people in the comments, and I appreciate the comments, I do. I actually enjoy the comments, even when I don't agree with the comments. The fact that we would be extending our terms or we would be giving ourselves a raise, it's not the case. It would go before the voters, and the voters would decide whether there would be a three or a two-year term. And the voters would decide on all these things. So we are not giving ourselves, or not giving ourselves a raise. It goes on a ballot, and the citizens of our community serve, will decide on that. And secondly, to John Harrison's point, I served on the Charter Review Commission about 25 years ago, and we actually created the perfect.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Jeff?
I'm going to echo Councilmember Herring's comment, because this was done by the Charter Review Committee. I didn't come in and say, "Hey, I want more money. I don't want to make 81 cents an hour is what we get paid." And I don't care about the money. We don't do it for the money. Let me tell you what I do with my money that I get from the city. I give it back to the Employee Christmas Fund. That's what I do with my money. So to have it stood up and said here that council wants more money and council wants longer terms, that's ludicrous. I'm sorry. And I didn't ask for it. This is what a group of your peers as citizens came up with in the city of Kerrville and said, "This is what we want to propose. This is what we're going to turn over to council, and this is what's going to be turned back over to the voters for them to vote on." So it's your choice if we get $250 a month, if we get three-year terms. It's not our choice alone. So it kind of fires me up a little bit when people say, "We're doing this up here." And Barbara, you and I were kind of laughing to each other when Mrs. Ferguson and I ran against each other, and the vote difference was three. So that's why I was kind of looking around, you laughing with Barbara, so, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Roman?
Yes. I'd like us to go through the document that we have here, if Council will indulge me. Go to do that. Okay. I'd like to start on page two, and this is of the one that's in our packet. There are a couple of things that we're doing with state law, and I do want to get clarification on it. If for some reason the state law changes and it says that a municipality can only do this if their city charter says it can, if we take out some of these provisions, we may not be able to do some of those things. If it's contrary to what state law says, then state law controls, and then that's it. So I think we need to consider that. On the second one, we're talking about the disannexation. It's my understanding that they're no longer going to have to be, have to require a petition to deannex or disannex. Is that correct? It's just going to be, we can do it on our own, right?
You can do it on your own now, and you can do it on your own in the future.
Okay. I do have something, there's, this is a very, very long sentence, Section 1.6. The entire thing is one long sentence. I would suggest breaking it off. But also, if you look at line 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, line 6, where it says "city," and then in brackets, it has said and stricken and in red, it doesn't make sense when it says that "The city council, by ordinance duly passed by a majority vote of all council members, may discontinue any territory as a part of the city that ordinance shall specify." I think there needs to be a period there or a semicolon if we're going to continue going, to be grammatically correct. So I would suggest if you want to make it a run-on sentence or run-on provision, just put a, just put the semicolon back in there. Page three, notices, damages, or injuries. One of the concerns I have about that is that if we give them longer time with what state law currently has of 180 days, that may provide some people time to really think about whether they're actually going to provide that notice, and then maybe some people would just say, "Never mind, I'm not going to do it." Whereas if we go down to the 90 days, which I know we're allowed to do, people might jump on that opportunity, and we might get a lot more notices of potential suits if the statute of limitations is shorter than what state law has. So I want us to consider the implications on that, and definitely the voters. Next is term limits. My thoughts are if the State House and Congress can deal with it with two years, I think so can we. It's been that way for a long time. I agree with one of the statements that was made by a citizen. I think the founders did that intentionally. It also takes away the opportunity, and it's a longer opportunity for the citizens to decide whether a council member has been doing a good job or not. And if we're going to provide a longer term, my opinion is maybe we should provide an easier mechanism for removing a council member and lessen the recall numbers that are required for petition for recall. And, you know, we talked about, you know, electing a candidate who, because it's, there's a learning curve or whatever, and people, you know, may not want to do it. First of all, if you don't want to do the work that comes with this position, respectfully, it's not for you. It comes with a lot of work, and I know that. But also, I think the voters are smart enough to elect the candidates that they want. And I think if there's a, an issue with the learning curve, then the citizens should elect a candidate with the knowledge to come into this position. If that's the case, whether they've been attending city council meetings before, have served on boards and commissions, I mean, that's the way you gain knowledge of the city's operations. You don't need to just start fresh new here. But either way, it's the citizens' job to decide that. So that's on the term limits. Based upon the input from the council members, that was part of the rationale. Not all council members were asked about that, definitely, I'll tell you that. The ramifications that come with that, one, is that you now require a majority vote. That's going to require a run, possible, potential runoff if we have at least three candidates and one doesn't receive a majority. With every election comes additional cost to the city. And we always talk about, well, it's such, so expensive to host an election. You're going to require another election here too, if you have to have a runoff. I do not agree. I was hoping Mr. Harris was going to speak about this when he spoke to the commission about the four-fifths vote to appoint and remove a city manager, a city attorney. It should be up to the discretion of the city council. Otherwise, they're taking that authority away from them. So there are a number of here that I'm going to move that we actually take out before we adopt it.
Okay, are you prepared to do that now?
I can if you'd like me to. If you want more discussion from anybody else.
Anyone else additional?
Just for the record, I didn't, never spoke to the commission members either, nor was I asked to speak to the commission, nor would I probably have wanted to speak.
Okay, if you'll go ahead, Roman.
I move to, let's see, what do we have here? I want to make sure that this is done correctly, because should we, should it be to provide direction to you or to adopt it as presented? Because I do want to make some of those corrections, like we should either have a period or a semicolon there, and those kind of things. How would, what's the best way to provide that motion? To provide direction to you?
Right.
Okay. So then I move to provide direction to the city attorney by adopting the proposed amendments to the city charter with these changes. Add a semicolon on proposed amendment number four after "city" to remove proposed amendment number seven regarding the term limits. To remove proposed amendment number nine regarding compensation amount. To remove proposed amendment number 11 regarding a plurality vote instead of a, I'm sorry, regarding a majority vote instead of a plurality vote. To change proposed amendment number 12. I don't know if we're adding or taking away the commas. The rationale says we're adding commas, but it shows a bracket and struck out. So clarify that either way. I think they need to be struck out.
Okay, what, what do you mean there?
Excuse me?
Can you repeat that one that you want to put on there?
Proposed amendment number 12. The proposed amendment on Section 4.03, it has that we're striking out commas, two commas there, but the rationale on it says we're adding commas. So are we adding them or are we striking them out? We need to determine whatever is supposed to be there. And my proposal is just to strike them. I don't think they're supposed to be there.
You want to strike the two commas?
I think that's what needs to happen.
Okay.
The rationale and the language are conflicting. To strike proposed amendment number 16, which is regarding a four-fifths vote to remove or to appoint and or remove a city manager. To strike proposed amendment number 18, which is to appoint or remove a city attorney. And I was actually hoping, Mayor, if this motion doesn't pass, that we vote on these individually or collectively. That way I can express my individual vote on them, and then y'all can just vote to approve them if y'all don't want to. But that would be my motion right now.
Do we have a second to Mr. Garcia's motion? Do you not have a second?
Can we go ahead and vote on these by different groups then, so I can express my vote on them individually? That's how I'd like to make sure it's on the record.
Can I just suggest, what we're trying to do is let the voters decide these things. And they may agree with you, Mr. Garcia, they may, which is fine. That's what, I trust the voters to make those decisions. I don't know why, why not allowing them to make those decisions is a good idea, because they are the people. They would speak, don't you think?
I think so. You may want to also ask the previous council who considered amendments like on the compensation, which current Mayor Eichner and former Mayor Clarkson, who spoke, were on and voted against putting that on. So it's not just me, I'm not the odd one out here.
I'm not saying you're odd. I'm just trying to understand.
Right.
If we're putting something in front of the voters, and we're trusting the voters to make the right call, are you not trusting the voters?
No, I trust the voters, absolutely, but it's before us for a reason.
Indeed. Indeed it is.
Any comment? Brenda? Okay. Jeff?
Okay. Roman, I feel, we had a committee that put this together. They spent a lot of time, and they, they did it thoughtfully. They, they looked at all of these, the pluses and the minuses of all of these. This is, what we are doing is taking this to the public, and they will make the final decision. This is not our decision to be made. And I feel that, I think that you have offered up your opinions. They will all be on record for anyone to see. And, and I'm sure that you will be vocal in that as, as between now and election. And that's perfectly all right. That's fine. I think that we need to submit this the way that it was given to us, and I think that we need to let the voters make that final decision. And I think that we have consensus of council that that is, I'm feeling that from everyone, that that is what we should do. We take the recommendation from this committee that we appointed. We, we send it to the public, let them vote, and let them make those decisions.
I'll make another motion. I'm going to make a motion to approve all of them that I don't object with. And then if a council member wants to make a motion to approve all the ones that I did not include, that way my vote can reflect in opposition on them. So I move to provide direction to the city attorney to prepare an ordinance on the proposed amendments for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. And that way we can approve those first, and let's just get that done with.
Do we have a second to that motion? It complicates, it complicates things very much, Roman.
It really doesn't.
Yes, it does.
We've done multiple motions before.
But I feel...
I don't know how to do multiple motions in a meeting.
Roman, we know how to do.
This isn't very complicated, everyone. I'm making this simple.
Roman, we did not have a second to your motion. What we, I think, does anyone have a, want to make a motion that we accept as presented?
May I move that we accept the recommendation from the Charter Review Commission in its entirety and let the voters of our community make those decisions as previous Charter Review Commissions have done in the past? Anyway...
Do we have a second? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed?
Was in your motion the portion to let the voters decide?
I'm sorry, that was a side comment.
Okay, because I'm not going to vote against that, because I do want them to vote.
We want them to vote. I'm sorry to have added that.
No, you're good. I just wanted to make sure what the motion's going to say that I'm voting for or against.
Are you comfortable? And it is a, you are voting against?
Vote against.
All right. I think your vote has been dutifully noted, Roman. And we have a 4 to 1 motion that has been passed. Mike, are you good?
Yeah, I did, there was a typo. It was my first mistake of the year, typo on that last slide. So the second reading of the ordinance will be on that first meeting in February, which is February 13th.
Oh, we couldn't have it on Valentine's this year?
Not on Valentine's this year, so you can make appropriate plans.
Thank you.
All right.
The first reading of the ordinance.
Second reading.
Second reading.
I noticed the typo, but I didn't...
Okay, we're all good? Mike?
Yes.
Dalton? Shelley?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right, Council, is there anything for future agendas?
I do. There are a number that we have on our pending agenda list, also including like the development agreement that we had with Lennar for this. That was supposed to be before us months ago, and it still hasn't come up yet.
Well, one of the reasons, I think, Roman, is they want to make sure it's right when it comes before us.
And that's very fair. I don't know why it wasn't right when we were told it was supposed to be before. So that's something I want to see on. But also, I want to make note, we do this work for, we should be elected here, at least for the work. I love doing the work that we do here, not for just the title that comes with it. That's an afterfact to me. I feel like we should have had more on this agenda to deal with. We set aside this time at least twice a month for that. So I appreciate what, if there's an attend to try to expedite the meetings, but let's do the people's work here. So we have that that we need to get done. We have, I think, some presentations that need to be done on ordinances for amendments to a lot of our codes. I think we need to get those out sooner to us, so we can discuss those and consider those, because it looks like we're going to have one meeting where we're going to be adopting a handful, more than six revisions to international codes and others. So we need to get all this done. This is continuing, I see it... This is continuing, I see it pushed off more and more and more in the pending list. So I like those all to come before us, and let's get some stuff done here, too.
I would like to respond to that, Roman, in that we don't know on a daily basis what staff deals with. And so it's not that, I know that it's not that they're putting these things off. It's that there are things that take priority, and they've had a lot of those lately. So I don't think it's fair that we, we say that they're being pushed off. I think we need to trust staff to bring us the things that are ready. And one of the things that they have, they are doing is bringing us things when they're ready, not before they're ready. And that is definitely something that you have fussed about.
I wouldn't use the word fuss, but I have had concerns that things we have been presenting have not been complete.
Have concerns.
Yes, absolutely.
So I think we need to trust staff to bring us the things as they are, as they are coming. I don't object to your asking for these things to be looked at and brought before us, but we need to trust staff that they will bring us what we need when we need it.
Definitely. I'm also looking at the priorities we set during our retreats every year, and I want to make sure we really accomplish those. Otherwise, I don't want our accomplishments that we set as a council to go undone. I really think we've got to, we've got to work to accomplish those. And as a governing body here, we can give direction to staff to, you know, get us certain things. And so I would really like us to look seriously at what did we put on there to accomplish, treat ordinance and stuff like that. That was another one that we haven't done yet, so.
All right, anything else, staff? Staff?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry, did not mean that. Dalton, anything that you would want to add to us before we dismiss?
No, Mayor, just to kind of, you know, all the council's points and talking with kind of each of you, you know, I know it's hard to believe, I've only been here just over three months. And so we're really trying to organize and get, you know, better on this. We've talked with council numerous times, kind of on some of the priorities. We've taken a look at those. We do want to make sure that the items that get put on the agenda, we're trying to get a little bit better organized as far as how the agenda's being, you know, managed and presented to y'all as well. We know how important it is to make sure that the information is accurate and complete. And so sometimes, you know, incompleteness, there is some delays where things do get pushed back to make sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. But yes, we are working on getting better on the agenda management piece and again, providing some better, we'll call it smoother transitions into this. So, you know, appreciate the patience, you know, bear with us. You know, staff's doing a great job at making sure that we accomplish all of council's goals and what they want to do and need to do.
All right. At 7:33, we will close the city council meeting. Have a good evening, everybody.
That's a record.